Welcome to the March 28th, 2022 Winchester Select Board Meeting. With me tonight is my colleagues, Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Mariana Gubeloff, John Fallon, and Michael Bettencourt. I want to start by extending a very warm welcome, I know Mike did last week, but to John and Anthea, congratulations on your election. We look forward to working with both of you as we approach the town's business. So with that, I think we can get started. We will start with, there's no chair report tonight or committee update, so we'll start with the acceptance of donations.
Yes.
We have two, it looks like two donations.
I move that the board accept two ARPA stabilization grants to the Recreation Department from the February disbursement. One in the amount of $16,333.33 to be used for the Rapp Kid Connection and the other in the amount of $5,633.33 to be used for the Lynch After School Program.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
May you post? Great.
And then I move that the board accepted donation of $581.02 from the Thompson family to be deposited into the Conservation Commission gift account with thanks to the Thompson family.
Second. Mike, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, we can move on to Beth, your report.
Thank you. Well, first, welcome to the two new members. Happy to have you here and happy to be working with you and happy to be back in person here in Town Hall. It's been almost two years probably to the day since there was an in-person meeting in this room. First order of business is to make an appointment. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I have made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Special Motor Equipment Operator of John F. Fianda of Woburn, and I respectfully requested the board waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
I move that the board waive the 15-day waiting period for the appointment of John Fianda to the DPW Water Sewer Special Motor Equipment Operator position.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
May you post? Great.
Thank you. And just over the two new members, typically every meeting I try to put together our Town Manager Report. Usually includes, in the first section, kind of a highlight of the agenda items that we have on the agenda that evening and then the second part of the report goes into, excuse me, non-docket items. So I'm always happy to hear feedback from the board in terms of things you'd like to see in here, additional ways I can help to improve it or additional items you'd like to see reported on at the meet. So I'll just quickly run through the additional updates here. First topic is spring town meeting. So the first night of town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 25th. Based on a meeting we had this morning, I believe there will be a second night of town meeting scheduled for the 28th, which will cover the non-agenda items that we have towards the beginning of the, excuse me, the non-financial items that we have towards the beginning of the town meeting warrant. And the next night would be May 2nd and then we'll skip May 5th and the next night would be May 9th. The town manager's hearing is scheduled for Thursday, April 14th and we're still working out the details of the time and whether that meeting will be virtual or in person. So I'll have confirmation for that next week. Next item, the town is currently in the process of marketing affordable housing unit at 40 Elmwood Avenue that's available for purchase by a qualified first-time homebuyer for the below-market price of $270,000. There's an open house scheduled for April 2nd and you can contact Jen Cafarella here in the Town Manager's Office for anyone who's interested in acquiring that property. Next up, I have a variety of construction and capital project updates. We have a very long list as we start to move into the spring construction season. We just opened the bids last week for the transfer station improvement project. Happy to say that the project came in within the budget, including a limited contingency. Our consultant at Weston Sampson is currently reviewing the low bidders references prior to final award. So hopefully that will come in favorable and we'll be ready to start that project this spring. Morocco School Immediate Repairs will be bidding the work for the roof repairs in mid-April and that work is expected to start in late June. Construction is also expected to start May 1st at the Church Street at Waterfield Road intersection and that construction is expected to last six to eight weeks. That project involves a variety of traffic calming improvements to improve the safety at the crosswalk there between Studio on the Common and the Town Common. The Eversource 345 KB project, they'll be starting work on the Jack and Boar operation at the Washington Street Bridge near Sunset Road where the Winter's Hospital Facility is sometime later this month or in early April. That work will restrict the road to one lane during work hours and then we'll open it up to two-way traffic at a narrower width during non-work hours. Eversource is also going to be working down Washington, the Washington Street Corridor headed towards Cross Street on that project over the next few months. The 115 project is getting closer to completion. They're currently finishing their vacuum testing on Wildwood and Fletcher Street and on Woodside Road near Winter Ponds. The work at the corner of Bacon and Church Street is complete and they're also continuing their work out at Wedgemere Station, which will include some work out on Bacon Street. The MDRA is moving forward with the replacement of a 48-inch water main on Forest Street. This is towards the 93 Overpass, that section of Forest Street, between Bellevue Avenue and Eugene Drive. They'll be starting Phase 1 of this project later this spring and we'll expect to work through November. And then there'll be two additional phases of work to come in future year. So it's going to be a very busy area out on the Forest Street/Washington Street corridor. We also have the North Reservoir Dam project. We'll have some trucks coming in and out of that area with material that's being taken off-site there. So it'll be a very busy area for construction. Also, National Grid is doing work all over town, but right now they're out there working on Bacon Street. So that's an area of lots of detours and traffic impacts in that area. Finally, just a couple other items. First one is with COVID-related updates. Happy to say that we have, both in Winchester and across the state, declining number of cases and our Health Department has decided to discontinue our weekly COVID testing clinics that we had been running at Town Hall. They will continue to assess the need for future testing clinics and may stand them back up around the April school vacation timeline, but we'll have some more information on that. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the INCA pantry is open to Winchester residents and provides non-perishable food and personal care items for families who may be in need. And that service is available by appointment only on Sundays and Mondays. There's information here on how you can reach out to them. That's all I had for now. Happy to take any questions or any comments.
Any questions for Beth? Great. Thank you, Beth, for that update. It was very thorough. Moving on, next item on the agenda is public comment. I'm not sure if anyone's here for public comment. If you are, I would remind you that it's limited to three minutes per person and it can be a comment on anything that is not on the business agenda for this evening. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one rise, we can move on to the next item. Is Stacy coming?
Sheila.
Sheila, I'm sorry.
Oh, so for the control.
Control court, no, Stacy's not here, okay. All right, so we'll get right into the business items. Sheila, banning issuance for Washington Swanton Transfer Station South Reservoir Dam.
Good evening.
How are you?
Hi.
Sheila.
We have tonight your approval, two bond anticipation notes, two short-term borrowings. The first one is a tax exempt borrowing for the transfer station and the South Reservoir Dam. The bulk of it is the transfer station of 5.5 million. The South Reservoir Dam portion of it is 72,000. So it's 5,72,000. I think you may have some paperwork on it already. So for the bidding, we received four bids and the winning bidder was Piper Sandler and Company with an interest rate of 1.16% with a premium of just over $74,000 with an interest cost of just over $138,000. It's a term of one year. They both a term of one year. The second one is the one for the Washington Swanton Street property. That's the Affordable Housing Land Acquisition and that is in the amount of $5,270,000. We received three bids and the winning bidder, again, was Piper Sandler and Company. The interest rate on that one was 1.46% with a premium of just over $54,000 for an interest cost of $131,384. They're both one-term, as I had mentioned. They're both for the projects that were mentioned, three separate projects and they had to be done separately because one is taxable and one is tax exempt. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Sheila?
No.
The vote, I think, Anthea, you have the vote. And there's a shot-in version. I discussed with Tom Counsel, I'm sorry, Bond Counsel. As you know, we usually read all of the long bond information into the record. He has approved us to only do a shorter version of it and just attach the total vote to the minutes of the meeting.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I move that the board adopt all of the votes related to the approval of the sale and issuance of notes as written in the document provided to the board and available at this meeting.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May you post? Do I need to do a roll call vote for those or?
We usually do.
Okay.
Yeah, because you need, on the record, to have at least two-thirds, so.
Okay, I'll do that then. Mariana?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous.
Patty has all the documents that need to be signed. They're tabbed and read to the Select Board. There's, you know, the clerk and I that have to sign them all. So, and there's a vote there and there are four copies of that and the, Anthea, that you would sign. Okay, everything else is tabbed and read to the Select Board.
We'll do that tonight for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheila. Have a good night.
Thank you. The work that goes into making this happen, so I appreciate it.
Appreciate all your hard work. All right, next up, MBTA Center Station update. I believe we have Nathan Ray here. Hey, Nathan.
Hey, Nathan.
Hi.
Hey, Nathan.
See you again.
See you again.
So we're getting going, huh?
Yes, yeah. I think you maybe even saw some activity today. Maybe just getting some fences starting to get staged, so they're putting in place. Next week will be definitely more noticeable, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. The bottom one there.
It's on yours.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Got the obstructed view?
Yes.
It's happening, you're the senior-most member.
So I'll just, I think I know some few faces, but good to meet everybody. And just, I'm the project manager, been on the project for a few years, not as long as Beth. But, so she fills me in still, actually. All kidding aside, no, I just want to kind of give you an update on kind of the next stages of the project and kind of a little bit also history, I guess, for a few of us. So, yeah, I want to talk about what the project, you know, has been and what it will be. A brief, you know, kind of look ahead for the spring and summer construction schedule. I want to look at the various activities, construction activities, highlights for those, traffic and parking impacts, transit alternatives. I think we've talked about that before, but I'll go over that again as well as public outreach measures that we're undertaking. So, as many of you know, the station was closed in January 21. The new design station will incorporate new elevators and stairs. At this time, the platforms will be raised to be fully accessible, called it level boarding with the coaches, as opposed to what it was, you had to step up into them, so it'd be fully accessible. And then covered stairwells, upgraded sidewalks, new emergency lighting, security cameras, as well as signage. Construction cost is around $48 million. That's a render, this rendering here is from the Abner Jonah lot. Looking at the existing pedestrian tunnel. And just so you're aware, back to this one, this is from the Town Common, of course. Spring and summer construction schedule, so kind of the pre-construction, what we've been going through in the last few months included pre-construction letters that were issued. These are letters that we issued to our bidders. We did this at the demolition project in a certain kind of radius of the project where we ask owners if we can, you know, do a, what we call pre-construction survey. And they can neglect it, decline it, but we go in and do kind of just a brief kind of visual inspection of the outside for any sort of pre-existing damage to the buildings. And so that's happened. There's permit applications that have been going on. There's, and then of course, the whole list of submittals that happen in construction projects, contractor buyouts, other survey work, shop drawings that have been going on. Site preparation is, well, late March, this is this week starting and then moving more visibly, shall I say, next week. We're bringing equipment on-site, including materials. We're implementing our traffic management plan, which I'll be going over later.
Is there going to be some kind of signage there for people to call if they notice something, let's say it's over the weekend?
Yeah.
The fencing's down or someone's in the monkey around or something like that. You know how it says for snow removal, you call this number, but it's so for construction issues, is there going to be a number to call?
Yeah, yeah, we have our hotline number.
It'll be posted there?
It'll be posted there.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah. It's also on our website and probably on the town website, I believe, also. But yeah, that's, we can add that. Installation of temporary fencing, utility, relocations is something that kind of is the next sort of step also. And then environmental controls will be established. These are kind of usual with construction, construction work, silt fencing, straw bales, other signage. And then the, kind of the next kind of phase of the real construction work is the demolition phase. We're breaking that down into the Abner Jonah lot for the next, it's going to happen the next few months. And then after that will be the Waterfield Lot. They'll be overlapping a little bit, but we'll be starting in the Abner Jonah lot. It'll be consisting of demolition of ground level and then platform-level structures. This is the sidewalk and then the platform. We'll be starting the process of salvaging and reworking the stone that we're doing. There's an old elevator shafts there, old baggage elevator shafts. And then what's left of the ramps will be coming down as well. So that'll be the end of April going through to May on the Abner Jonah side and then again, the Waterfield Lot from June to August. A bit more look at what we're doing in the Abner Jonah side. That pink is kind of the ground-level work and then the orange, I guess that is, is the ramp work and what's kind of up above. So we'll be kind of mobilizing there and then starting work more fully towards the end of April. But it will be, that'll be the primary focus for construction going forward right now for first activity, shall I say. And that Abner Jonah side is expected to continue till May. Similarly, on the Waterfield side, we'll be mobilizing there after the, after the Abner Jonah work is almost all done. Like I said, there will be some overlap and that'll be going on until approximately August. So that'll take us through. I don't know if everybody knows I'm coming back every quarter to do an update. I think we have, and there's a public meeting planned for June. So that'll be obviously another update. That'll be the next update. This slide is talking about traffic and parking impacts. This is a result of talks with the town that occurred previously and agreed upon and voted upon at town meeting, I believe. And so this orange outline is kind of where we've delineated, where our work can be staged and we can work in that area. The, in the Waterfield side, at the top there, you'll see a lot of the lot will remain open. There'll be some loss of parking along, next to the station, adjacent to the station there. And then BT, well, the contractor, who's Barletta, by the way, has an access gate off of Waterfield to the north side and then there's also a gate. I don't know if you can see the, where are we here? There's a, there's a gate here. So he'll, the contractor will access through here and this is a fenced-off area, except we are maintaining access to the Chamber of Commerce here, as agreed upon. But then the flow of this lot, the Waterfield Lot continues. So you drive in through here and you can park and then when you want to leave, you can leave also through this area, kind of similarly as you're doing now, but that's what we're doing. And then similarly on the Abner Jonah side, we fenced off this area. There will be an access gate off of Waterfield and just so that we can sneak into this area here and do a lot of work that we need to do here. There'll be stairs and elevator on each side. This is the existing pedestrian tunnel. I don't know if everybody's oriented themselves to this. Yeah. And then down here, we're building another pedestrian ramp, a new, obviously new pedestrian ramp. And so that'll, that'll be going on down there as well.
Can I just stop you right there?
Yeah.
Just see if there's any questions. I have a couple, but I don't know if any other board members have any questions right now.
Yeah, so my question is, are construction parking, is that going to be within the fence or outside of the fence?
We have a place for them to park. We have property at Stop &amp; Shop.
Okay.
Which is, yeah, yeah, in behind there. So we've told them that's, we've agreed that there's no parking, on-street parking.
Okay.
Maybe some of them might go in there, I don't know, but obviously it's really, space is a premium here. So the agreement is that there's no, like, contractor parking, taking up town resident, customer or client parking for downtown shoppers.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Mariana. I think when demolition happened, there was contractors parking in those spots. So we just want to assure, you know, because we're losing a lot of parking in that area, that, you know, the contractors park in the designated areas by Stop &amp; Shop, if possible.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Or in the fenced area.
Yeah, that came out and we took, we took care of it last time, yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, for, I know the town is going to be doing construction at Church and Waterfield. Is any of this sort of re-coordinated pedestrian or parking going to impact when those are happening at the same time?
So the work zones won't overlap. Obviously, there'll be a lot of construction in a small area, so we will have to coordinate our contractors where this project. I know you've made your contractor aware of our project. Our work's probably six to eight weeks. There's two years, so. But obviously, if you're bringing heavy trucking in or something off of Church Street, that's something, and we'll have, we have two police details that'll be working at our construction project and they'll have police details as needed for their work. So we'll be coordinating everything.
Yeah, yeah. I think we had a good working relationship with, you know, getting the police to help us out.
Yeah.
It worked really well.
Yeah.
Just one concern, when we were doing the demolition work, kids walking to school, some of the detours, like around the Rotary specifically, I remember people calling me about, led some of the kids to walk into the Rotary. And I know, you know, some people complained and it was fixed, but just keep in mind, that's a heavy pedestrian way to walk to school, to middle school and high school, especially in the warmer weather. So, you know, anything we can do to make those detours extra safe for the children, that'll be, you know.
Yeah, so maybe we could, I know you and I talked about this, but the one that, you're going to be closing that sidewalk underneath the Waterfield Road Bridge, correct?
On the south side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you'll have, are you crossing people or are you going to keep a kind of a Jersey barrier area for people to walk there?
Over here, you mean?
Well, where the orange is on the left side of Waterfield Road, are you, are you detouring everybody across the street?
Yeah, I think, yeah, idea is you get here and then you're detoured across and then you walk down this side and then back, and then back again.
Okay. Are you, the lower one has an actual crosswalk. Are you striping a temporary crosswalk at the upper location?
Yeah, we'll have to have, we'll have to have a crosswalk here of some sort. I don't know exactly if, for sure that we're doing that, but yeah, we will have to, yeah. There's no existing crosswalk there?
Not at that location.
No? Not down here either? We can't do it down here because of the gate? Okay, all right.
So it would be helpful if you could give me a little blow-up of this area and maybe a little write-up that I could provide to our middle school so they could circulate to parents in their newsletter that goes out this weekend so that folks are aware that this detour will be put into place next week.
Beth, can we get a recommendation, somebody to look into whether it makes sense to make Waterfield a one-way during this construction time or at least during school times? Because it might make, we might be able to detour traffic on Main Street and make Waterfield one-way and make it safer for pedestrians. If there is a recommendation for that, I think we might be open to that.
Sure. Yeah, I can speak with the safety officer and fire chief.
That would be a tall ask, I think.
It might be, but it might make sense if we can, if we can detour people on Main Street.
Especially with Lareway Road closed. I don't know how we cut through, but, okay. Other questions at this point?
I just have a couple, Nathan. So is the parking going to be lost for the duration of the project or is certain areas going to be open and closed as needed?
Yeah, I have another slide I can show you what will, what will be for the duration and what will be kind of temporary during the project, yeah.
And then into the Waterfield Lot, it looks like you're using the same way in, same way out. That would be a change in the traffic flow pattern for that Waterfield Lot, I think.
Uh, that's, my understanding is that it's more or less staying the same. You're driving in next to, kind of, D'Agostino's is up here. You go there and you come down the hill here.
Okay.
And, yeah, you won't be able to drive down here, for example, but you continue driving here, you can park here. We're losing these three spots only to gain an exit out.
Okay.
So it's kind of counterclockwise.
Okay, so yeah, I didn't know if that was the upper part of the lot or, okay, I get it. So the upper part's not depicted in the picture, okay, great. Great.
Yeah.
Keep going if you want.
Sure, yeah. So now I'm moving more north. This is Lareway Road across the, across the top here. So Lareway Road will be closed to not only parking but also circulation of traffic, similar to what you saw during, during the demolition project back in last year. So we have this also pedestrian rerouting here that you mentioned. So we'll be, I'll just verify that and I'll coordinate with Beth about making sure that it's everything that we, we want it to be. Yeah, so we have gates here as well. This is the kind of back alley behind Thompson. There'll be stairs back here and an elevator. So there's a gate here to, so trucks drive in off Waterfield down here and then they kind of go one-way. The idea is back out here to the Rotary.
I don't know, maybe you have this somewhere else, but could you talk about where the bus is going to, bus stop is going to be?
Yeah, I have a slide for that too, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's a bus stop we're moving. So this goes back to Rich's kind of question about parking traffic impacts. So these begin next Monday when we're planning on, you know, taking parking spots and kind of rolling out into our easements that we've agreed upon with the town. Lareway Road will be fenced off and will remain closed for project duration. Portions of Waterfield Parking Area and Abner Jonah Parking Area will be unavailable during construction. I'll just tell you what these colors mean. And then occasional parking and traffic impacts at Waterfield Road. So there are some parking spots that will be kind of lost temporarily and then returned after the project. The permanent losses are the orange. For example, these will be lost because we're building the pedestrian ramp there. There's other work. I think the elevator and stairs may be taking over this area here, similar to this site as well. But all the blue will be returned and then Lareway Road will be opened up at the end.
So just so I'm clear, so the blue, will that be closed during the entire construction or?
Closed for construction and then returned as a parking spot at the end of construction. The orange will be also.
What are the ones on Waterfield Road, which I think are.
Sorry, Waterfield.
Close when you're doing the above work.
Correct, yeah. We have to demolish the platforms that go on either side of the rail corridor up top there, above. Correct, yeah, we have to do, we have to demolish the platforms that go on either side of the, the rail corridor up top there, above Waterfield. So we have to take those platforms off. And so that's why we have this kind of, those blue along either side of Waterfield. There'll be some temporary, temporarily lost spaces there on Waterfield when we're doing that, that work there. Probably a weekend work and maybe some overnight work involved with that too, yeah.
So the parking restrictions that go into effect on Monday, the town should expect those to remain in effect during the entire length of the project.
That's correct, yeah.
For some reason, if you don't need all that space, you know, it would be great if we could get some of that turned back over to the town, even incremental parts, especially during the holiday seasons.
Right, okay.
You know, for the merchants.
That's understandable.
Thank you.
This is to Beth's question. There's an existing bus stop at, at Lareway Road, you know, to service the commuter rail station. We are still using it, it was helpful to have downtown. So that'll be lost because we're closing Lareway Road. So we're kind of providing some transit alternatives. We're telling people, you know, if you can make your way to the corner of Main Street and Vine, that's the next closest bus stop for our 134 route that, that connects you to the Orange Line at Wellington Station. Alternatively, you can make your way to Wedgemere Station, which is still open. Everybody knows where Wedgemere is, it's just down, down the way a little bit. And then just a bit about public outreach. We have our public meeting that we're going to be holding in the summer, the summer coming up. And then after that, it'll be done another quarterly in the fall. This is our project email address that we monitor all the time. Our construction hotline number. And then our, our, our project website. Has a lot of information on it too, so. We're going to be updating that regularly. I'm sending Beth weekly updates on kind of like high-level issues with the project. So I think if anything is, anything's of concern, you know, we're in close contact, you can of course call. We have our full-time site resident engineer also. I've supplied his phone number so anybody in the town can get hold of him. He's, he's here at our site office downtown at, I don't know the address, but it's above Cafe Nero. That's our, that's our site office, yeah. And he has some staff there also helping him out, monitoring. We call them site inspectors. So he's the resident engineer and he has two site inspectors working there full-time.
Is there signage where the old bus stop used to be to direct people to the nearest bus stop? Because I know, I mean, that's a pretty popular stop.
I, I was told the temporary sign directed people, it went up last week. I haven't seen it myself, but yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
No, that's a, that's a good question.
Will you give me a copy of the presentation from today? I can put it up on our website.
Sure.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you, Nathan, for coming in.
Thanks.
We'll see you quarterly and certainly if anything arises, you know where to find us.
Sure.
We're hap, we're excited to get this project going. It's been a long time coming, so excited to see shovels in the ground and hopefully, you know, finish ahead of schedule.
Yes, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Nathan.
Thanks a lot, Nathan, appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just one comment on that, Rich, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, last year around this time, we kind of discussed, you know, a larger kind of safety plan based on a lot of the construction going around. So we're, the town's going to be under full construction over the next two years. So, and you know, we saw with kids starting to walk and bike to school that, you know, they're going to take the shortest route around construction and everything. So I don't know if we want to have a conversation with T-TAC and the schools and the public safety officer, but I think that we need to really communicate the safest way to get to and from where everyone's going. Because there'll be sidewalks shut down, there'll be a lot. So I know we kind of had taken a look at doing that last year. I think it's worthwhile for us to even invest a little bit in a plan at this point.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good suggestion. I was happy to see, I think an email was last week or the week before, from the school system about the construction. So I think it's, it's wise, because I think you're right. And we did have a couple incidents last year, we had a couple of close calls, so I think that makes a lot of sense. So we can certainly docket that for a future agenda.
Good, thank you.
Okay, moving on, water and sewer rates. I think we have some guests here to discuss. Jay, his team. Do you have enough chairs for everyone? Mark Abrams.
Hello, everyone, how's it going? Nice to see you, yeah, nice to see you.
Sorry, I just want to make it easy.
So, Mr. Chairman, thanks for having us. This is our annual water and sewer update. As you know, we come in every year at this time to see if we have to look at the budget and if we have to raise our water rates. I'd like to thank at this time Matt Abrams from the Abrams Group. He's been part of our team for many years, helping us assess the water rates. Also, I have Liam McGinn, the business manager, and Jimmy Gibbons, the operations manager. Also, I'd like to thank Stacy Ward. There's a lot goes into this, getting the budget and trying to review the water rates, working with the MWRA. I'm going to turn it over to Matt Abrams. Thanks, Matt.
All right, thanks, Joe. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Abrams from the Abrams Group, happy to be back with you guys again this year to talk about water and sewer. We've been working with the town for several years now on water and sewer, looking at the finances every year and looking forward a few years to see what we think may be necessary for rates moving forward. So you've, the board in general has seen presentations like this before. This presentation is very similar to the one we, we had last year because not a lot has changed since this time last year when we did this. So we have a few slides for you this evening and I'll just go ahead and run through them if okay with you guys. So we're, we'd like to start with FY '22, which is the current fiscal year. Just kind of a recap on where things are and also what happened this time last year as we had, headed into this current fiscal year, FY '22. So when we met with the board last year, the select board last year around this time, the select board supported a rate plan that had water and sewer increases of 3% in FY '22 and FY '23, which is the upcoming fiscal year. Also included 5% increases from FY '24 through FY '26. When we do this analysis, we always look out five years. So that's why we presented five years, a five-year rate plan to the select board last year at this time. And as already mentioned, that plan went 3%, 3%, 5, 5, 5. When we look at these projections, we always keep an eye on retained earnings because that's really the reserves that are within the water sewer fund. And we want to make sure that there are enough reserves so that the water sewer fund would be okay if there weren't enough revenues in a given year, maybe because it's a really wet year. And billings aren't quite what we anticipate them to be in a given year. Also, it's good to have in case there's a strong capital need and on an emergency basis. But we've worked with the select board before on what that target is. We've worked with the DPW staff on what that target is. And recently settled on a range between 8% and 10%. So what that means is 8% of the water and sewer enterprise funds operating budget or 10% of the budget. So once we met with the select board last year, the select board supported the plan as already mentioned. That went before town meeting and town meeting approved a 3% increase for FY '22, for water and sewer rates. So now looking, going ahead several months, where are we with FY '22? We tend to compare it to recent fiscal years. It's not really a fair comparison because FY '21 was such an abnormality. FY '21 came off a very dry summer, you may remember that during the pandemic, extremely dry. What that typically means is people that want their lawns to look nice are going to water their lawns and then they're going to water them a lot more than usual because of the weather patterns that year. Plus, people were home because of the pandemic. Residential usage was up significantly that year. So in short, FY '21 was a strong year revenue-wise for water sewer because of strong water usage. This year is lagging well behind FY '21 because the summer last year was wet. If you compare it to the prior year, it wasn't even close. But it was a wet year. We're comparing that to FY '20 because '20 was a wet year as well. So billings are down over 18% compared to FY '21. But again, that's not really a fair comparison because it was such an abnormality. Comparing it to FY '20, it's up over 20%. But that also is because there was a large, fairly large rate increase going into FY '21 as well as the service charge change, the service charge increase that took place. So, big picture for FY '22, we're looking at a small deficit in FY '22. These are projections, but projecting just under $100,000 FY '22. And we think retained earnings, once they're certified after FY '22 closes, will be about $1.8 million. And that's, that's a large number for this fund. Again, in large part because of what happened in FY '21. That's about 14% of the budget. So we talked about the 8% to 10% range, that's 14, that's above the target right now. But as we look forward, we'll see where we think that's going to end up. So that's the current fiscal year, let's look forward. We're currently focused on what we think rates are going to need to be for the next fiscal year, FY '23. As I mentioned earlier, we always look at five years ahead in the future. So we're presenting an analysis for the next five fiscal years, FY '23 through FY '27, as well as a rate plan that supports that. So we always focus on the MWRA assessment, that's a big piece of the water and sewer budget. The town has assessed both a water, an MWRA water assessment and an MWRA sewer assessment. They're calculated using different methodologies by MWRA. Water is a little bit more of a straightforward methodology where it's based on the town's water usage in a recent, in a recently completed year. Sewer has got a few other factors in there, it's a more complicated model. But usage, usage affects both of them, but it affects water more so. So the MWRA assessment in FY '22 was up a decent amount because of that really dry year that I talked about. So now looking forward to the next fiscal year, FY '23, the preliminary assessments have been provided to the town from the MWRA and the water assessment is down $150,000 compared to the prior year. That's 7.1% because we went from a really dry year with a lot of usage to a wet year with a lot less usage. So you can understand the impact there. On the sewer side, you see a little bit of that impact, but not quite as much. That assessment did go up a little bit, but it went up 2.3%, which is below the standard that the town typically sees. It's usually in the 3% to 4% range. But what that means is things will probably normalize next year. So thinking ahead to FY '24, I would expect the MWRA assessment to normalize and go up probably a standard percentage, somewhere between like 2% and 5% would be my guess.
So does the MWRA, did, did they give you a heads up or they must say they're going to embark on a large capital project? Do they have refinancing debt and so therefore you're going to see an adjustment to that assessment? So let's say the assessment's only a dollar. Now, if this is going to be indexed, it's going to be 1.1 times that because of some future, whether they need new Nut Island or whatever that is. Do we have that kind of stuff, visibility into that, that would be baked into these numbers?
Uh, so.
Or we have nothing known about that?
I don't think so.
Do they, do they share that with you?
We usually only get the assessments, the preliminary is February, like the week after the budget's due, February 16th, we usually get it. And then the end of June. So unless it's something huge, then we probably wouldn't hear about it.
Jimmy?
Yeah, no.
But they do give a sense of what they think will happen year to year.
Yeah, yeah.
They just have a standard number where they think, I think for water, they say it's going to go up 3.9% every year, which are their costs, not the town's costs because it's based on that formula. And on the sewer side, it's, I think it's 3.4, 3.5% per year. So there are ways to project the assessment, but it's based on a few variables. So you got to be comfortable with those variables as well. And, and in the projections that we've done for the town, we have, we're trying to mimic those methodologies as well as we can. But you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard to do that.
Yeah, it's gotten pretty close. Whatever came in a week later, it wasn't that far from it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what else? Capital plan. The, the town continues to invest strongly in capital. On the plan for the next five years, there are three vehicle purchases, totally $220,000. The, the town typically funds capital out of retained earnings for water sewer. Also included in the capital plan, we look out 10 years in the capital plan. But for our projections for the discussion this evening, we're only talking about five years, but still we capture for 10 years in the capital plan. Over $21 million planned for water, sewer and stormwater capital projects over that 10-year period. And for the five-year period, five-year period that we're focused on, we're projecting additional debt of $3 million related to that plan. So, big picture, next five years, we, we project out that bottom line. We're looking at, we think we're looking at deficits anywhere from over $500,000 to well over a million dollars in the next few years. And if we think back to that $1.8 million reserves that we currently have, that the fund currently has, that's not, that's only a few years that it can cover those deficits. So in short, current revenues for the water sewer fund are not sufficient enough to cover expenditures for the next few years. So because of that, retained earnings will be depleted in the near future. We have it depleted by FY '25 right now with no rate action. So because of that, we continue to suggest the town address rates. And taking that one step forward, we've put together three rate plans for your consideration this evening. These rate plans are very similar to the rate plans that were brought before the select board last year at this time. Option one is we, we'd like to include a level rate plan. And this is all with the target in mind. So we're trying to make sure that there's enough revenue coming in the door so that we're hitting that 8% to 10% target for retained earnings that we talked about earlier. We think a rate plan of 5.5% per year for the next five years would do that. If the town, if the select board, we're not interested in doing a rate increase for FY '23, that's option two. Technically, that could happen, but that just means higher increases down the line. And option three is very similar to the option that the select board supported last year at this time. You may recall, it was 3%, 3% and then 5, 5, 5. Now it's, if we do 3% in FY '25, those outstanding years are a little bit higher than we had last year, but similar. And I think those are the slides we have for you this evening. So any questions or comments, I'll be happy to address them.
Mariano, I have a couple of questions. One is the average users bill, is that a quarterly bill or annual bill?
Yep, sorry, I failed to mention that. Yes, it's a quarterly.
Okay. And my second question is, is 8% to 10% what you recommend that we, is that, is that the right target for us to have?
I think it's the right target for this town. I wouldn't say so for other communities. And the reason why is because of the impact that the Chapter 110 tax levy has on the water sewer fund. That funds 86.45% of the debt. So that's a little bit, the other, other communities that we work with doesn't, doesn't have that fact, don't have that factored in. So we would recommend reserves higher for them for that reason. Typically, we would recommend 10, between 10% and 25%. But I, I personally think that 8% to 10% is perfectly fine for this community. And, and the fund has generally been around that for the last few years and it's, it's worked, it's worked well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Board members?
Jay's?
Yeah, no, I, I think it would be important if we can get a vote tonight. What happens is we like to notify the residents during the season where they're not going to use a lot of water. So if they know the rates are going up, we send an insert out with our next billing system and they will at least get aware of that the rates are going up. Probably along the vote at town meeting passes. So if we can get a vote.
Also to let them know in case they want to change their consumption habits.
Right.
In terms of the three options, is there a staff recommendation?
In terms of the three options, is there a staff recommendation?
Um, you know, I like option three. I think, I know past select board members always wanted to do small increments. And if we don't, you know, look at that, the increments, you know, if we did a zero, the numbers start going up in the few other years out. I think option three is, in my opinion, is the best. But it's really up to this board to make the decision.
Matt, just one question I have is, you know, if we did do option three, you know, what is the likelihood that those future years would come, you come back at 7.5%, 7.5%, 7.5%?
There's a decent chance. It depends on how the next year goes.
Yeah, really based on what, excuse me, on weather. We're hoping that it'd be a dry season. If we get a dry season, then the numbers, you know, percentage could go down.
There are a lot of assumptions baked into here, which is a reason why we recommend that the town look at it every year because things could change between now and this, and next year at this time. And as Jay just mentioned, it's very weather dependent. A dry year leads to more, more outdoor water usage, more revenue. That presumably would mean lower rate plans next year at this time if we were to do the same presentation. But if it's a similar season, as similar summer as last summer where it was wetter, then these plans could be a little bit higher next year. So, it does depend, it does depend on the weather.
Just to let you know, in the past, we had the retained earnings down to like $2,000, I believe, many years ago. So, take a chance. I'll lose some hair if we do that again.
We don't want to go back there.
But, you know, you don't need to have the 8% to 10%. You know, what Matt and his father, Mike used to come in here and ask, past select board members, you know, we're going to have that target date of 10%. And so I do believe we're getting close to that, to try to stay at that 8% to 10%.
Yeah, I think four, more like 3% to 5%.
3% to 5%, yeah.
It was lower for a while.
It was lower, yeah.
This would be with rates increasing June 1st, is that?
July.
July 1st?
Mike, did you say? Yeah, thank you very much, Matt and everyone. I know a lot of work goes into this and staff. And, you know, as Jay was saying, that we really, you know, want to try to keep it level over a period of time so there's no surprises. And we had gone through a period of time where it was kind of artificially low. So I feel like we're, we're still catching up, right? And I guess my question is, when are we not going to be catching up? And is there, you know, these are still pretty big numbers that we're facing for increases at a time when, you know, residents are asking us to kind of pump the brakes. I mean, is this what, I know it's hard to predict and weigh into the future, but it still seems like a lot. And, I mean, I like option three, I'll say that. That's consistent with what we've been doing. But, you know, we still have been getting a lot of questions, a lot of feedback from residents that it's getting, it's getting expensive.
Yeah. So we do have a lot of projects going on. The North Reservoir, you know, we started that, actually had a meeting today, which is very good news. The South Reservoir, we're looking at that. That could be a future cost of millions of dollars. Part of ownership of owning our own reservoirs that we lease from the DCR. We do multiple water projects. We do multiple I&amp;I sewer work. We're way ahead of most communities when it comes to sewer work. We're really ahead of water. When we, back in the early 80s, we did all the transmission lines. Now we're, you know, at a point where we're looking at the lead necks. We have a couple more years of the lead necks, then we complete that project that, I think the town meeting gave us, you know, the committee to look ahead at, do all that. So it's just really a lot of capital expenditures coming up in the next future, so.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, can I ask on, I see in the memo that the rates have sort of a tier-one user, average residential, average commercial. Are there changes to the rates for the low income as well?
The low income, low income is always 20% less than the, than the regular rates.
Okay, so any change there would be?
Yeah, it would be reflected in low income as well.
These changes would impact all users.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No questions?
So, of the 3.4%, 3.9% increase, how much of that eats up the 5.5%, for example? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, in main, central main power, we're raised, so you have a, you have a cost to provide the infrastructure, and you get the energy charge. They're up by 85% on January 1st. So what I'm trying to understand is, the cost of the product, you know, we can't control that. So, we don't want to artificially absorb that, because that's just going to eat into the retained earnings. So that's what I'm trying to understand here, because it sort of would feed into what the right, appropriate decision would be. Do you know what I mean?
The cost, you mean?
Right, so what, of your...
The town's had, depending on the time of year, we supply between a third and two-thirds of town water from our reservoirs, and we get the rest from underbrays. It's not fully the underbury cost. We don't supply the whole town with underbury water, although we could do that in emergency situations. But part of it's the cost of producing our own water with the reservoir, which is, you know, during normal times, we're not having to repair dams, significantly less expensive than purchasing water from the underbury.
Good example, everything, everyone from Cambridge West going to Lexington is all on MWRA. Everything from Cambridge to Washington Street is on Winchester water. And then there's a section of the East Side system, which is Highland Ave, goes on both systems. During the summer, our treatment plant can't produce enough water to feed the East Side I, which is Highland Ave, so they go on the MWRA. But in the winter, we supply with our treatment plant, so.
But the town owns all the water and sewer pipes in our town. So, we maintain all that infrastructure ourselves.
So, what I was going to say is, I like option three. If anything, I would say, you know, if we could add half a percent, like make it 3.5% just so that the increase from FY23 to FY24 is not as large, hopefully. Right? That would be my preferred option, like 3.5 in FY23. And then maybe it's hopefully 5.5% in FY24 and stuff, you know, going from 3% to 6.5%.
Other thoughts on that? I mean, that would make sense to me. You know, my concern is, you know, the 24, 25, you know, in the future, if we see a big bump, so. I don't know what others think.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me. I mean, either way, I mean, I think Marianna's suggestion is consistent with, with kind of what we've been doing to try to kind of even out the increases a little bit. So, you know, there's balance there. You know, if we keep them artificially low, you know, we don't get anybody calling in saying, "Thank you, that was great." You know, what happens is, you know, when, when it is a big jump, then we get the phone calls, and we get, you know, complaints, and, you know, town meeting wondering what we're doing. So, I think the predictability of that, kind of keeping it as flat as possible is the goal.
I'd agree with that. There's nothing further? Does someone want to make a motion?
Yes. With the 3.5. So I move that... Actually, I'm going to ask a question first. Am I, are we making a motion on Marianna's?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with a 3.5% rate increase. Is that what others think?
Yeah, and we don't need a motion for future years. It's just for this year.
Yeah, just for this year. So it would be a 3.5, I think the motion would be for 3.5% water sewer increase for FY20.
Okay. So I move that the board approve option three for water and sewer rate increase with exception to FY2023 at 3.5% as presented in the March 23 memorandum from Matt Abrahams. And further, that an article be placed on the Springtown Meeting warrant to increase water and sewer rates in accordance therewith.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? I didn't need to do a roll call vote for that to...
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you, everybody. Thanks for all your hard work on this. I know it's not easy.
It's a lot of work. The staff does a great job. Station Ward's a big help to us, too.
You didn't bring the giant spreadsheet till this time.
No.
Matt just hides him behind all the easy ones.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we have, I think we have another. Thank you very much. You don't have to be. You can if you want.
Thanks, Matt. Talk to you tomorrow.
I think next on the agenda, we're going to talk about the Arbor-Wendell Street water situation.
So I'd like to bring Bruce Adams. He's a consultant from Western Sampson. He's been here as long as I have. He started back in the 80s. There's no one, you know, besides Jimmy and I, know more about the water system than Bruce has. Been really very helpful for all of these years, so it's great to have him on board still.
So this was, this was his idea to switch the water over to Woburn?
It was. I'm not going to blame him. You're right.
You've been looking for it. That's really the only reason why we...
I can give a little background.
Yeah, that'd be great for some of our new members.
So, we have a neighborhood in Winchester. It's the portion of Wendell Street and Arbor Lane, which have historically been on water supplied by the city of Woburn. We have an intermunicipal agreement with them that was signed in the mid-1990s when Arbor Lane was constructed. But the use of Woburn water on Wendell Street predates that original agreement, probably back to the 50s, I think, when those skilled homes were originally constructed. The issue is that Winchester's system wasn't able to supply the pressures in those neighborhood as well as the Woburn system could. So there was a system made at some point to make that connection. Unfortunately, this fall, we were notified that the city of Woburn had elevated levels of PFAS in their drinking water supply, which is a new drinking water standard that recently became effective, I don't know, in the past year or so, from DDP. So the state standard is 20, I don't know what the unit...
Micrograms per liter.
Micrograms per liter, and they were in the very low 20s. So we, we were notified by the city of Woburn, and we in turn worked with the neighbors and were able to switch their systems actually over to this, to Winchester water very quickly. Right after the Christmas holiday, we were able to make that change. And they've been, as a result of that, they've been dealing with less than...
Low pressure, yeah.
And certainly less than they had when they were on the Woburn water. It's better on the Wendell Street end. As you get up Arbor Lane, the additional height, it gets worse. So we had come to the board earlier this year to look at, and actually the board approved, $230,000 in ARPA funds to install individual booster pumps in those homes. And we did some outreach to the neighbors, neighborhood after that approval. And there were some concerns voiced by the neighbors. And so, we kind of went back to the drawing board to see what other options were on the table. And so Bruce is here tonight to kind of lay those out. But our recommendation is basically that we put in a temporary solution, was a temporary pump likely at McDonald Field or somewhere in that area. And then we work over the next six to eight months to design a permanent solution. And that permanent solution would be going likely to fall town meeting to get funding for either a permanent pump station or a new cross-country water main to connect. So I don't know if you guys want to?
No, you did a great job. Cleaned it all.
So it looks like, just from the memo that Bruce provided, like I said, we had the $230,000 in ARPA funds that we had previously allocated. I think if we shift that $230,000 over to this new effort, we'll be able to fund the design and construction of the temporary system as well as the design of the permanent solution, which we don't have, we haven't decided what that, exactly what that will be.
Yeah, we're still working on it, yeah.
But it'll be one of those two options. So that's our recommendation tonight as a board vote, to reallocate those ARPA funds to pay for the design and construction of the temporary solution and the design of the permanent solution.
Yeah, I'll just, just add that, I think Mike and I attended the Zoom information session with the neighbors. I think we had 31 or so neighbors on. We, certainly Marianna and I seen, Mike's seen the letter that we've got from the neighbors. I'm not sure if John and Anthony have had seen that yet. But certainly some concerns about the plan that we proposed. And certainly, we took the feedback. And, you know, staff worked hard on this recommendation. So, you know, I'm not sure what my colleagues think, but I'm interested to hear. Anyone?
Yeah, I think the recommendation that's put forward is the, is the right one. And, you know, the neighbors had some questions, and I think that they're satisfied with this, this plan here. And, you know, the funds are there, so it seems like the best solution, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think this plan makes sense. The, the other plan that we approved, I know, I know we were looking at a much higher number before in the multiples of millions to, to do a permanent solution that the town owned. So the solution where we bought the individual pumps for each home, I know the concern was that then the homeowners would be responsible long-term for the maintenance. And so, that's, that's absolutely a valid concern. And I think that, given that the amount is in the 700 to 1 million, that's much, much closer to something that we can fund versus the multiple of millions that we were looking at before. So, I think this is a good plan.
What's your commerce level in the 700 to 1 million? Like, ah, might be, might not be?
We're working right now to try to refine those costs. It's challenging because of supply chain issues, especially the pipeline issue, the pipeline route, because there's a six to nine-month delay, and prices are just all over the place. So we're trying to project what's going to happen a year to a year and a half from now. It's challenging.
Yeah.
But we hope to refine those by the end of this week and get a better, better idea on the pump station versus the pipeline routes.
And Beth, we'll probably come back to the select board with a decision, yeah?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Take an update. What do you think the timeline is for the temporary solution?
We're working right now. We've located a pump system, which can be delivered in about three to four weeks. So it's a matter of getting pipeline connections made, a building to put around it. And probably the most challenging thing is to get the temporary electrical service for that.
So, there'll be a building on McDonald Field, now in that area. So we do have room, I think, because we don't have to put in someone's backyard front yet. So, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, it'll be right at the, near the intersection of Clark Street and Wendell, the field, and probably be in place for one to two years until the permanent solution is...
Be in front of Jimmy's house. Jimmy grew up on Wendell Street.
Well, we need to resource on that temporary.
Probably, yeah, yeah. We'll work with them.
Okay.
That's in process.
They've become friendly to us now since we let them in town. It's amazing. When, "You can't do any more work. We've got a problem." Right?
Great.
It's good for a couple more years.
Well, it'd be great to get this in place, you know, for the high-usage season. Great. So, no further?
Just one quick question. Two, as far as the permanent solution, that would be at least one of the options under McDonald Field. There would be some construction there, or?
Yeah, a permanent pump station might be on the order of 20 by 25 feet.
Okay.
Preference is above ground, so it's safer in a confined space. But that is yet to be determined.
Oh, okay.
It would essentially be, we recommended a location on the field right adjacent to the road.
Okay.
And the other plan wouldn't have anything on the field, right?
Yeah, the pipeline option is all underground.
Oh, underground, okay. I didn't know if there were any kind of planned improvements over at McDonald Field that, you know, we could kind of tie into this as well, but...
You give us more ARPA money.
All you do is leave here with tons of money every time you come in. What more do you want?
They couldn't have any more.
If we can cover it with a couple of tennis courts, I know those tennis courts are...
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Huge, yeah. Oh, you're right.
So I think, if there's no further comments or discussion, just entertain a motion?
I got one. I move that the select board revise appropriation of $230,000 from ARPA funds made at the board's February 7, 2022 meeting to appropriate said $230,000 for engineering services and construction of a temporary central pump system and the evaluation of other alternatives and design of the final solution to address water pressure in the 38 homes in the Arbor Lane-Wendell Street neighborhood that were impacted by PFAS contamination rather than for the installation of individual booster pumps as previously proposed under the February 7, 2022 vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Bruce, for coming in. Appreciate it. Can we get those out to the residents? Next on the agenda, we have a Lynch School Carriage House update.
So as we'll, as you'll see when you, when we get to the warrant, EFPBC has voted to place two articles on the Springtown Meeting warrant. The first article, which we're calling Article 1, it's not Article 1 of the Springtown Meeting. It's a little confusing, so. Is to appropriate funding for the design, construction, and renovation of the carriage house as well as for design, construction, and alteration of the Parker School for Use as Swing Space. The second article would fund, would move forward only if the first article failed and appropriates design and engineering funds for alterations to Parkers for use as swing space. It's my understanding that under the second article, the Winchester Public Schools... It's my understanding that under the second article, the Winchester Public School Central Office would remain at Parkhurst while it's in use as swing space for the duration of construction. EFPPC has provided us some cost estimates with Article One, they're expecting the cost of the carriage house remaining design and then the construction work to be somewhere in the order of $5.98 million and just under $170,000 to fund the swing space at Parkhurst. And Article Two, they have the same amount for the Parkhurst work with the 169, 750 to fund just the design for the Parkhurst swing space improvements. Mark and I have requested additional information from our Hilltop Securities to evaluate the various borrowing scenarios for these two requests. And we'll have additional information to present to the board on, on April 4th. I don't have too much in the way of detail right now. Obviously, the concern, particularly with the Carrot House article, is how this will be funded. The school department has considered some possible revenue generating options after the, for the carriage house after the construction at Lynch is completed, but that wouldn't obviously be until the use, the space is no longer being used as swing space. So there's a, a gap here where the town would have to figure out how to cover the, you know, ban payments.
But this is for 13 individuals to house 13?
I don't, I, I couldn't speak to the number of staff at the central office. That'd be a better question for the school department.
The 169, 750 for the swing space, was that for all of the students at Lynch? Or is that for only a portion and then Lynch is constructed?
So my understanding, and I, we had a short call this afternoon where I was trying to understand this a little better because I was a little confused that the number's the same for both articles. My understanding is that the school department is considering basically three options. One is where the carriage house is built, all, all the central office space moves out and then some portion of the kids move into Lynch and some portions stay at, some portion of the kids move into Parkhurst and some portions stay at Lynch. The school department's also considering an option where all of the kids get moved to Parkhurst. And so I did ask the question this, this afternoon, that does that 169 cover either of those scenarios? And they thought that it was, that it did because most of the cost is not in the design, but in the construction if they had to build additional modulars out there. So I, I don't think they've decided yet exactly how they're going to, you know, place the kids during construction. But it appears that this, this article would fund the, the design costs associated with either of those options.
But only Article One or also if Article One fails and Article Two passes?
If Article One fails, I believe it, yeah.
Then they could move all of the kids because to me.
I don't know that, I, I'm not, if Article One fails, I'm not, I shouldn't be, I'm not the one that should be answering those questions. I think, but all I can say is that the design money that they've, according to what they, what they said, what Chris Nixon said this afternoon, is that that design money would cover either scenario where they're moving part of the kids or all of the kids to Parkhurst. But really, the detailed questions are better asked of the EFPPC and, and school committee.
Thanks, Beth.
Sure.
I know facts are sort of limited here. It's kind of a moving target. So I don't know if others have questions or comments at this point. Kind of a wait and see approach.
Yeah, I mean, I know you attended as well, but I attended the FinCom on, what was it, last Thursday?
A couple Tuesdays ago, yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday, maybe last week, when EFPPC presented there. And there were some interesting ways to fund this, right? And if, and if, if those details are fleshed out and, and there is rental income from Parkhurst, if the carriage house is done, then I think that, that might make sense. I'll repeat what I said last time. If this is straight from operating budget, that, then I think that that's not something that we planned for.
Now, yeah.
But, you know, I, I do think that moving all of the kids, and this is a school decision, but I think, you know, the, the Lynch community is, is very strong. And I think that, you know, if they can find a way to have all of the kids move together to Parkhurst swing space rather than half and, and be able to complete construction sooner by being able to demolish the whole school at the same time, I think that would help the, the Lynch community.
Yeah, I've, I've heard the same thing, Mariano. The Lynch community wants to move together and stay together through the construction period and splitting them up is just not really an option. So it doesn't mean that we necessarily have to build the carriage house if we don't have a way to fund it. But it's, you know, we'd asked for other options as far as rental space or absorbing some of those central office staff and employees into, you know, other buildings. So, you know, we just, we still have the same questions, you know, without answers that we've had for the past, you know, couple of years, to be honest with you. So I, I don't know. It's, you know, I'd like to see some creative options for us. But if we're hoping to use, you know, future rentals of Parkhurst for the debt service, I mean, that's, that's pretty high risk. So I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, without a contract in place or something, then how, how we would fund it. But we'll just wait, I guess, to see if something.
Yeah, so we'll have some additional information from Hilltop for your meeting next week. And in the meantime, we'll try to gather as much as we can from EFPPC. I know they're meeting this evening.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I share both your comments. You know, we guys at the meeting, I think it is about 15 staff members, some of them, I think it's 18 there now, but I think three or so could be housed from the IT department at, you know, various schools. And so, you know, my concern is the operating budget for the next few fiscal years is the model that town staff has put together isn't projecting well without this project. So certainly rental could be an option, although I think, you know, there's some capital investments that need to be made to Lynch based on some previous, excuse me, Parkhurst, based on some previous meetings that we've had with school committee members. So, you know, what we do in the meantime to fund this is a concern to me. So certainly we appreciate more information. I know time is of the essence here as we're getting closer to town meeting. So, you know, we're prepared to, to work with, with the, you know, various boards and, and see what we can do here. But certainly need more information on our part.
Just in terms of the rental income, I think the earliest that that would be generated would be fall of 2025. So we would be having to cover the debt service payments in the, in the.
And that wouldn't really be certified until the following fiscal year, right? Okay.
So we're looking at F.
So that would be, that would be, fall of 25 would be fiscal year 26. We couldn't count that as revenue until FY 27.
Right.
We'll lay that out in more detail next, for the next meeting.
So we're looking at at least four fiscal years.
Right, so if, if the, if the ban is issued in, in June of '22, our first payment would be June of '23, which would be FY '23. And then you have like two years of ban and then you'd have a pay down. So it's not just the interest you're paying.
Yeah, the only other thing is, you know, when Dr. Hackett was here, I think back in September, we asked the question, well, you know, if, if this doesn't pass, and we weren't sure how it was going to be funded at that point, whether it be debt exclusion, you know, or some other funding mechanism, you know, the, the answer was we'll, we'll make it work if it doesn't, you know. So there's got to be a backup plan as well. And we haven't heard that. Just seems like there's a lot of, you know, chewing clock at this point, you know. So it's, but we're, the rubber is hitting the road pretty soon. So I, I don't know when we can expect to have information. I mean, at our next meeting or have, have we heard from?
Yeah, I mean, we only have, you know, a couple of meetings left before town meeting. So, you know, looking at the schedule, we've got April 4th, April 11th, and then town meeting starts April 25th. There might be a meeting we have to squeeze in before that April 25th. But, you know, right now, we have two regular scheduled meetings, so. And I'm certainly, we'll, we'll dive into the town meeting warrant, you know, specifically next week. So.
Yep.
It'd be nice to get this information. All right. All right, our final business item is the warrant article vote itself.
So we prepared the warrant for the board's review this evening. As we discussed, there's a, a regular warrant and then a special warrant, a special town meeting to be held outside of the regular town meeting for the Waterfield Law article. I don't know how much detail you want to get into. Do you want me to run through the articles or do you want to just hit on the high points?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, everyone received a copy of the, the warrant and has reviewed it. I think just hitting on the high points is, is fine unless anyone wants to.
So Article Five, I believe the board's going to discuss further this evening. Article Six, there's a piece of property within the Lynch School site that is currently under the control of the select board. It's a well field property that needs to be transferred to the school committee. And so that's, that's Article Six. Article Seven is a retiree health insurance advisory committee. Article Eight is the citizens petition related to the extending the local voting rights to all adult residents of the town of Winchester. And there's a series of capital planning requests and other financial articles. And then we get into Article 23, 24 and 25, which is the, the budget. Article 26 and 27 are the Lynch School Carrot House articles that we just talked about. Article 28 is the, is the article the board voted to sponsor at your previous meeting with respect to the traffic study for the Lynch School neighborhood. Article 29 is the personnel board. And then the water and sewer rates were further up there. Sorry, skipped those. And then just the fairly standard articles as we get to the end of, end of the town meeting warrant here. If anybody wants to dive deeper into any questions on any of those in particular.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about Article Five in a minute, but just the ones that Beth just mentioned. Is there any comments, discussion at this point? I mean, right now, for, for this exercise, we're looking just to approve a warrant to send to town meeting. We'll certainly have time to go through each one and, and discuss and then vote a recommendation from the select board. But at this point, we're just looking to finalize a warrant to send out to town meeting. So if there's any discussion on that.
Only on five.
Only on five. We'll save, we'll save five for, for the end, but I don't know.
Well, I wanted to talk about the healthcare stabilization fund as well. I don't know if we want to, you know, talk about that. It was at the very, very end of the warrant there and there's.
Why don't we, let's talk about that first and then we'll get to Article Five.
Okay.
So I don't know if Beth or, or you, Mike or, so I think this, there was something in our packet from Mark talking about creating a healthcare stabilization fund. So we have, we are in the process of looking at our healthcare plan in town. We were facing an increase at Harvard Pilgrim. We went to, we're looking at a MYA option, which would be a 0% increase this year. And then I think Harvard Pilgrim also matched that, I believe.
Right, so MYA was a reduction and Harvard Pilgrim was a zero.
Yeah, okay. And so if you want to just talk about what we budgeted and why we think this might be a prudent strategy.
Yeah, so we, we are still working with our insurance advisory committee and our unions to consider whether or not to move forward with the change. Given where we were in February when the town manager's budget was due, we budgeted for a 3.7% increase, which was based on the rate that we had gotten from Harvard Pilgrim at that time. So it appears that either option that we move forward with will be at least some amount of savings. Although in the overall FY '23 town manager's budget, there was just over $650,000 in free cash that was being used to balance the budget. I don't expect that the healthcare reductions will fully eliminate the need to use free cash to balance the budget. Obviously, FinCom may make additional changes. But I believe, and Mike, I think you can speak more to the stabilization fund, but the idea is that we could create a stabilization fund where funds can be used, deposited annually or on whatever, you know, frequency we wanted to be used kind of as a rainy day fund for help, to help with annual health insurance coverage.
Yeah, I mean, over the years, our healthcare is one of the highest variables that we have. And so it's hard to really plan for. And I think that we feel in the 3% to 5% range is usually safe. We've had years where it's been more, where it's been less. And maybe it makes sense for us to set aside, when we have a good year, set aside some of the money that we had budgeted, you know, certainly not all of it. But so if, if we do have a spike, then we don't have to address a plan change. So I remember a few years back, we had, I think it was a 10% increase or something, right, Mariano? And it was, you know, a million dollars or so, right? And we just didn't have it, right? So we, you know, then had to, you know, discuss with the unions and we had to discuss, you know, where we could get that, that money from. So, you know, it's, and we had come off a few years of, you know, I think 001 or something like that, too. So, you know, the, where we have to look at a plan change for our municipal employees, it's really a bad outcome. It really means that there's going to be higher deductibles, higher costs for them when the cost goes up if we don't have money that's set aside. So this is a way to kind of protect our employees and protect a decent level of healthcare for them and kind of, you know, plan a little bit better.
Mark and I, and Stacy and I discussed this a little bit this morning. And our recommendation is that if the board does want to move forward with this, that we would create the fund at Springtown Meeting and then we would move any money in at Fall Town Meeting if there's any money left over from the prior year budget in the health insurance line item. And that we should establish some sort of policy to decide when we would withdraw that money. There would be, you know, certain, certain parameters and helping us make those decisions to withdraw on it.
Do other communities do this?
I, I believe, yeah.
They, they do. And there's, there's enabling legislation for it already. So we wouldn't need, you know, local option or, I mean, a home rule petition. There is a local option, sorry. We wouldn't need a home rule petition to do it.
Thoughts? So, so I mean, by putting this on the warrant this year, we would be just establishing the fund. We wouldn't necessarily be funding it at this point.
That's our recommendation.
I mean, to me, it seems to make sense. I mean, my concern, you know, looking at these plans, even, you know, in studying these plans, the MYA option, for example, I mean, there were some years that, you know, you saw an 8% increase, 9% increase. And, you know, that would be a devastating hit to this town. So certainly if, if there's a way, like we do with water and sewer, you know, to spread it out, I think that would make sense. Certainly, you know, funding it is a, is a different question at this point in time. But I think by creating it, at least, you know, we can start those conversations in process. Not sure what others think.
Agreed.
What would the effect be on our undesignated fund balance? I guess it wouldn't be an undesignated fund balance, right? Because maybe, maybe we can get recommendation from Stacy on how it would affect our undesignated fund balances because we already have a policy, the 6% to 10% policy looks at free cash and an undesignedated fund balance. And if we're moving money from what today would go into that fund and if we're moving it to a designated fund, like if it affects our 6% to 10%. I, I mean, I think it makes sense from the standpoint that if we get one off year, it will allow us to carry over and then hopefully the next year, it will come back down. Obviously, no fund is going to be able to sustain if we get three years of big plan increases. But at least it gives employees the, the ability to not have to suffer through for just a one blip on, on a one year. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of it. I just, I would like to see how it affects our, our reserves policy.
So we would need a motion to add this article to the warrant.
Correct. And you have the language, I believe, in your packet at the end of the original warrant that you got, not the one that went out today.
Does he know?
Yes, yep.
So someone wants to make a motion?
So I move that we add an article to the Springtown Meeting for the Healthcare Stabilization Fund to see if the town will vote to create an employee healthcare and health insurance stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Section 5B of Chapter 40, and to appropriate a sum of money to such fund, determine whether this appropriation shall be from free cash or other available funds or otherwise, and take any other action in relation thereto.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? No, great.
So we will.
Thank you.
We will insert that. I don't, I can't give you the number this evening, but we will insert that in the appropriate spot in the article. will insert that in the appropriate spot in the article, in the warrant.
So, just housekeeping wise, is everyone okay with the warrant except for, we'll discuss Article Five in a second, but just with all the other articles? Okay.
I am, yes.
Great, let's go to Article Five then. So, Article Five is our warrant on, you know, whether we should go back to town meeting and seek that the restriction on the, on the subsidized housing inventory be eliminated, and, you know, I'm not sure what others think about this, I've given it some thought, and, you know, I think the idea would be, you know, we're what left wondering if this went out to an RFP in this situation, you know, what we could possibly, you know, get for projects and recoup in terms of purchase price if this restriction wasn't in the RFP. So, I think we had planned on putting an article on the town meeting warrant to review that, because it was a late amendment to the fall town meeting, and I think, you know, I'm not sure where others fall on this, and certainly can discuss it, but, but my opinion, I guess, you know, the way I see it is there's really been no change since fall town meeting concerning this property, and, you know, I don't see what grounds we would have to, you know, try to, you know, alter the town meeting vote, I think, you know, one thing we could do is respect the town meeting vote, put out an RFP, and see what comes back, but, you know, that would be my thoughts, but certainly open to everyone else's thoughts as well.
Yeah, I'd agree with that as well, and rereading the, what was voted to, I mean, I feel a little bit better about the-
Yeah, I just read that, too.
The, you know, kind of limitation there on the, that the purchase price, you know, indicates the purchase price as a threshold term for evaluation criteria, and I think what Mina had said at the point, there's, it's not, it's not a requirement based on that language that we reach the number, right? So, it's just that it, it's a major part of the consideration in the RFP, so I think I had initially misunderstood that, and we talked about it earlier, but, so, you know, I'm, I'm fine with just, just pulling Article Five, you know, that would be my preference.
Is that, is that correct, that we do not have to recoup the $5.3 million?
Yeah, I confirmed with Mina this evening that, that is his understanding of that item in the vote, which is that the purchase price is a threshold term of the evaluation criteria of the RFP, that it's not required that we recruit the full price, it just has to be considered as part of the evaluation.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's important, you know, that we don't necessarily need to, to get to our number, you know, with this type of project, so, I mean, my preference would be to, to get this moving and get something out there and see, see where we land with it, as town meeting instructed us to do in the fall at this point. Not sure what others think, though. Anyone else?
I agree, I think we should get the RFP as soon as possible, because we have a lot of work to do once we get the RFP and the responses, and if we could get something in front of fall town meeting to be able to dispose of the property, it's, fall town meeting's going to be in front of us before we know it.
Before we die.
I'd rather not have to wait for spring town meeting to end before we can move on the RFP, so I would say then we can pull Article Five.
Yeah, the only caveat to say with that is, it would be awesome if we could do multitask like that, but realizing the, the limited staff we have, that we're really a two-man band, and the lead singer is sitting next to you right here, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned, you know, but I agree, I, I think forthwith, you know, let's get this moving.
I know a lot of the RFP was, was written already, so we have a good starting point for it, and, and you can, you know, I'm sure Brian will be happy to help.
Maybe one kind of more meeting with the kind of group that was working on the RFP just to kind of tweak it, I think it was kind of at the goal line last time we-
Is that-
Set it aside.
Is that group established? I mean, I know-
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, certainly if Brian can lend a hand, that would be great.
Yeah, and you had Jennifer Goldson, who is the consultant we were working with.
Yeah, that's right. But I agree, let's get it out, let's get this moving. Any other thoughts? So, we would need a vote to pull Article Five?
Yeah.
A motion and a vote?
Well, you could, you could wrap it into approving-
Oh, that's right, so we could approve the town meeting warrant, we're new at this, approve the town meeting warrant, with the exclusion of Article Five.
Okay, and do we need to add the inclusion of-
That's what I was just gonna ask.
The healthcare, or was that covered on the previous vote?
Well, you just did a separate motion for that, so I think you're okay.
Okay.
But the draft motion has, like, clerical edits and edits by town staff, and so we should keep all that language up.
Yeah, so I move that the board approve the warrant for spring town meeting and special town meeting with the exception of removing warrant-
Article Five.
Article Five, subject to clerical edits or edits from staff and town council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Great. Okay, our last item on the agenda is our consent agenda, and so for our new members, this is, you know, items that we think are consented to, certainly if there's an item on there that you want to see pulled off, you can certainly do that, but typically it's, it's one-day liquor license requests or events that need, you know, public space, so, I don't know if anyone had any comments or discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none? Can't get a motion?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as shown on the March 28, 2022 agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Great. Is that everything?
It's everything on my list, I have everything.
Okay.
And my list as well.
We're good?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everyone, thanks, John, thanks, Anthea, for your maiden meetings, especially thanking Anthea for pulling double duty, not just your first meeting, but also, you know, as the vice chair, appreciate all your assistance with those motions, so-
You're always this quick.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, don't get used to this, although just, you know, as a point of order, I did, I was talking to Beth about this, I was hoping that we could set a, a rule that, you know, no new business after 9:45, you know, to try to get everyone out here at a decent hour as much as possible, and I've also asked, you know, after town meeting if we could get our packages maybe a day earlier, just to give people an extra 24 hours, I know everyone's busy with family and, and other commitments, so if we could just get an extra 24 hours, and I know the staff's going to strive to, to do that, no guarantees, but we'll see what we can do, just to make it so you have more time.
Ask questions, you know, seriously, you know, instead of, yeah.
Right, and then the only other thing is, on the agendas going forward, you probably see an item pop up, just future agenda items, just to go through at the end, just so we have an idea of where we're headed, and then we can discuss, you know, if a member has, you know, a certain item they want to see on that agenda, just so, you know, we all have input into the agendas going forward, especially when we have these back-to-back meetings going forward, so, open to suggestions.
So, you have something for a work plan, I saw, when does that, when we talk about that and get, get focused on that?
Good question. It could be, we'll see how our, our meeting looks for next week, but it should be, you know, relatively soon, we want to introduce that, get members' input on that work plan, make sure it's up to date, and then kind of use that, use that as a guide to kind of guide us through.
Have we discussed meeting quarterly about the work plan? And I can certainly keep it up more, the board, put it in your packet more often than that if there's changes, just as an FYI.
Yep.
I think.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that will guide us in, you know, our goals and where we're going, so, great.
It's a long list.
I think it's only going to grow, although we could, I was looking at, I think we could take a couple items off, I think there's some things you've completed, so, which is great. So, I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? No? Great. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone, thanks, Wyng Kim.
Every, no one can leave.
You can't?